Is God God in your life? How to grow in relationship with God and renounce the idols in your life? And so, in one sense, Jesus coming into the world kind of debunked any type of idol. And Cardinal Ratzinger, then Benedict XVI, kind of mentions that in Introduction to Christianity. (laughter) That most people nowadays, or most modern people, would think it unthinkable to worship, actually worship, a golden calf. Or find it really hard to believe that somebody could actually think that the works of their hands could have more power than the person who made them. So, it's a foreign concept, and so a lot of people kind of think, "Well, that's kind of something of the past." But in actual fact, so we'd say as I have here, there's no golden calf in my backyard. But what we need to see, got a quote here from Pope Francis here on the side, and that is, "Worshipping the Lord means giving Him the place that He must have. Worshipping is stripping ourselves of our idols, even the most hidden ones, and choosing the Lord as the center of our lives." So, the idea is, of course, well, I have a little video to illustrate it, so if you're in the class, I can't remember if I showed it or not, but I think it illustrates the point of what are the idols in our life today? Okay, it's a cute little video, and I think it's bluefish, but we'll see. Just a second. Education wakes up and realizes how we've got to follow. All right, so I think you get the idea of the video. Oh, you get to see his interview, we're gonna have to stop that right now. Okay, so hopefully, uh-oh, this is not good. I'll be right back. Have a long one. All right, yay, it's back, good. Okay, so what we see here then, is that the problem is not the things. It's not people, it's not the program, or the object of our desire. It's our inordinate desire for anything. So, if we look at it, then, our problem is our craving and grasping after things. As Saint Paul put it, "It's the love of money that is the cause of all evil." In that sense of, money itself is not evil, but loving it over God is evil. So, you could say, success is not evil in itself, but loving success above God is evil. So, these would be the idols in our lives. And we also, if we look at, okay, this is acting strangely. Okay, well, let me put in the pictures. All right, well, so much for animation, right? Okay, so, what we see in 1 John 1:16 is, "Beloved, you cannot love the world and love the Father as well." So, he talks about the lust of the flesh, the lust of the eyes, and the pride of life as being the three areas which draw us away from God. And so, or if we look at what the catechism would say, is idolatry consists in demonizing what is not bad, or inordinate love of anything that is not God. So, as we, as we look at these idols in our lives, again, lust being that inordinate desire, we usually think of it only in the area of sex. But gotta realize, if we are lusting after anything other than God, then we are, we have idols in our life. Okay, so, and when we say the lust of the eyes, of our own culture, of, there's so much out there, it's just sensory overload, whether in social media, or just like even going to the, even going to the store or the restaurant, there's just so many choices. And we've gotten to that point of not being satisfied with what's good, we have to have a variety, and has to change up. And so, we see that there are lots of idols in our lives that we have to watch for. Now, I was thinking as I was writing this, it's kind of like, oh, and you know, religious life, this is beside the point, but religious life has the answer to all three of those, right? Poverty, chastity, and obedience. Yeah, okay. But really, it is the gospel, the gospel councils, and that really, everybody is supposed to, every Christian is supposed to live the gospel councils. Now, not as radically as a religious, but we are, we are called to be chaste and obedient or, as in satisfied with the goods that we have. Okay, so, what, as we make this examination of conscience, we can look at, what are the idols in my life? What's inordinate, what, well, how can I say it? The question is, what is the center of your life? Because what you've been time for, that's really what's important to you, right? And so, we think of, my students have like team sports, they might miss Sunday Mass, but they won't miss their soccer. So, you have to say, what's God in your life at that point? It's easy, of course, to point to my students, it's gonna be, but you know, I have my idols too, that I have to work on. So, what we, what we see so often, if we think about it, King Saul scares me to death. And why is that? Is because if we look at his story in the Book of Samuel, what we see is, he starts out, he seems to be a really good guy, you know, receives the Holy Spirit, he's prophesying, he's, at first at least, it seems he's humble. But where does the problem, where does the problem develop? Is that Saul wants to please himself without offending God. And if you look at it, what's wrong with that attitude? So, Cardinal Newman's saying something similar, is that often, too often, our attitude is to please ourselves without offending God. If you look at that, that is not wholehearted following of God, is it? It should be, of course, "I strive to please God, and if I also am happy doing it, I sit on the cake," you know? But what we also need to see, of course, is if we do strive to please God, we actually do find happiness. That is where happiness lies, is striving to please God. And by the way, happiness is one of those things that the more you pursue it, the more elusive it is. Whereas if you strive to do what's good, happiness naturally comes with it. So, that's something to remember as well. So, we also see the parable of the weeds, or I should say, the parable of the sower, when it gets to, "Some seed fell among the thorns." And we see it's the distractions, the anxieties of life that choke out the good seed, and then it doesn't bear fruit. It's like the heart receives it, but then the other aspects of our life pride it out, and we don't bear fruit the way we should. Okay, so, you can do your own little examination of conscience, I put in some random things. Obviously, it's not going to be an exhaustive list, but if we look at it, one that's a very big idol, enough to be mentioned several times in Scripture, "You cannot serve both God in manhood or God with money." So, if we look at it, especially if we're older, say that starts to become something that we really do look to, is money, security, wanting to secure positions, you know, as we retire, wanting to have a security, wanting to know what's going to happen, and that everything, you know, all the ducks are in a row, and I can run out of money before I run out of time, that type of thing. And if we look at it, it's scary to see sometimes in our society, there was a sociologist that was doing surveys, whereas maybe 20 years ago, if you say asked a teller at the bank to help you rob a bank, they would immediately report you, right? But now what happens quite frequently is the teller will say, "Well, how much of a cut will they get?" And everything like this. So, we maybe see greed taking hold of, well, people who don't have, say, a Christian upbringing, or you can see the fading of Christian influence in our society. But we have to look, again, Saint Paul, this was back in the first century, right, saying, "The root of all evil is the love of money." Okay, and for a lot of people, it's, it's not the golden calf, but it is definitely the full bank account, or the good we want in credit. And that can be sometimes what we're more concerned about than about our credit with the Lord. Okay, so, that idea of possessions. And we also need to remember that possessions possess, right? If we think about, you know, buying, buying a home, and then we have to not just pay utilities and things like that, we also have to work very hard, just keep the front lawn mowed, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, keeping our possessions few can help us to, if you would, I don't know if you wanna call it downsizing or simplifying our lives, so that God's the center. And yes, even somebody with a vow of poverty can do that. Moving comments has pointed out to me that I've got a lot of stuff that I need to downsize myself, right? So, and then concerning that. So, the detachment part. And again, money and possessions and security are not in themselves an evil. It's how we relate to it that becomes the evil or the idol. You can also say power, prestige, and privilege. We think of so many advertisements, that that's precisely like, "If you drink this, everybody will think you're really smart." Or, "If you buy this, everybody will, you know, eat their half to your door because you're like the most amazing person ever." Okay, so, excuse me. So, that whole idea, and again, it might not be that I want to be President of the United States, it might be that I just want my way to be done at recreation. Okay, so, we can be tyrants in small things, or, you know, the, well, you know, the saying goes in school, is like, who are the three people that you must become friends with? The secretary, well, okay, four people. The secretary, the librarian, the IT guy, and the janitor. Because they, they do have their own little kingdom, right? And you need to respect that kingdom. And of course, just make sure you don't have your own little kingdom that you have laying out and defended. And not saying that that's, okay, not putting down any of those people, but I think the typical idea that we see here is, even if our kingdom is only one room, it can still be an idol for us. It might be my classroom. Okay, not my classroom, you don't. Okay, but now there's difference between discipline and other things. Okay, now, we also see sports, physical fitness, and health. We think of all the perpetual adoration chapels around the city, right? All the health clubs. People visiting, visiting the god of health, or the god of physical fitness. And we also, as I was saying earlier, all the club sports, or it might be like, we were at 6:30 Mass at St. Thomas the other day, and there was a huge crowd. Why was that? Because WSU is playing at night. Okay, now, actually, most people didn't have their priorities right, they went to Mass first, but they changed their schedule to be able to make it to their other god, yes? So, and unfortunately, for a lot of people, that is their, that is their Sunday liturgy, right? It's almost more of religion than, than the Sunday Mass. So, we have to ask ourselves, a real rule of thumb, as I go through this list, is, would I miss Mass for this? If I would, I have an idol. Okay. So, as we move on, it can be beauty, fashion, or society, you know, keeping up with the Joneses, I'm buying all kinds of things, I don't need to buy because I want to stay desirable, right? I have to have the best car, the biggest truck, the newest iPhone, or whatever. All of these things, or I have to have the fastest internet, whatever it is, that I have to have the best and the most beautiful. And we think of how many people spend a lot of money to, you know, do this facelift, or whatever. Okay, so, that can be an idol for us. For a lot of people, maybe not this group, but I know definitely not this group, we don't own the cell phones. How many people are living just off their phones, and like they have them attached to their hands? And I've seen what's come out now, so you know, you've got the handle, so you can put it between your fingers, so it doesn't stretch your hand as much, and things like that. And I, again, I look at my students, and not just the students, but I look at my, I look at the parents that are picking up the students. It's really sad to see people sitting at the same table, and everybody has their iPhone instead of interacting with each other, or interacting with that phone. If they lost the phone, they would absolutely fall apart. You have to say, examine that as well, as, are you spending a lot more time with your phone, or with social media than you're spending in prayer, than you have an idol? So, if it's eating up your time, that is something to look at. Now, some other idols are more subtle. Well, in one sense, what's the, what's the idol behind every idol? Me, yes, indeed. And if we think about it, the first commandment is, "You shall not have any gods beside me." Really, all 10 commandments, all the other nine commandments, really further explain how we can be led astray from worshiping the one true God, because really, it's the, it's the, the first commandment summarizes all the commandments, is again, "Love God above all things, with your whole heart, mind, soul, and strength." If you do that, you are automatically obeying the 10 commandments. So, this idea of idolizing yourself, and always thinking about your comfort, how your plans and how they're going to work out, and things like that. And then there's also the, again, an idol can be something that's good, but we misplace our desire for it. So, this idea of, say, your children, your husband or your wife become your god, in that you are doing things for them and cutting corners for them that you shouldn't, okay? And I can, I can see parents sometimes, and again, that's not every parent, but some parents is like, "My child is right, every, the whole world has to adjust to him." Then, I'd say, "You've made him the center of your life, and so thank God." The idea is, of course, is that a child is a gift from God, and that I have, I'm in charge of him, but ultimately, I have to give it to God. So, again, that order view of how things are doing, and maybe not, oh, how they did that. Now, to give to a much more subtle idol, and this would be for somebody that's like in a much higher prayer range than the average Joe. And that would be, our devotion, and consolation in prayer can become an idol. That can actually be an obstacle to our growing in our union in relationship with God. I refer you to the parable of the Pharisee and the publican, right? The publican goes right up to the front, it's kind of like, and the gospel says, "And he prayed to himself." Notice the idolatry here. "He prayed to himself, 'I'm so glad I'm not like these other men, I've paid, you know, I fast three times a day, I pay tithes, and I'm so glad I'm not like this tax collector here.'" Is he, who is he praying to? It's not God. Okay, so, that, that idea of, I've got to say, "This many to my mercy chapels, and this many rosaries, and this many, might not be into St. Joseph and St. Jude, and, you know, and everything, and I'm so busy completing the prayers, that I'm forgetting who I'm praying to." Okay, so, that can be a very subtle idol, or if I am, and I'm not saying, "Don't go to Mass every day," or whatever, what I'm saying is, look at it and say, especially for a busy mom, or something like that, saying, "I'm gonna go to Mass every day, even though I'm neglecting my duty to my children." Okay? The idea would be, of course, balanced, that St. Francis de Sales' true devotion is going to actually enhance our ability to do what God calls us to do in our vocation. So, the subtlety of that. And then also, I don't know about you, maybe it's just me, but I sometimes catch myself watching myself pray, instead of praying to God. It's like, "Oh, look at me, I'm doing such a good job." Yes, okay. So, and that can be a real obstacle to us. And by the way, if we look at the whole, delve into the whole spiritual life, why does God withdraw consolation sometimes? Is so that we remember that we're loving Him, and not the gift that He gives. Okay, and that, that really is, that could be another definition of idolatry right there, is loving the gift, thus the giving. Okay, so, treating God like God in your life. So, I've been talking about the idols, now I'd like to turn and talk about, okay, so how do we get rid of those idols, and how do we make God the real center of our life? So, treating God like God in our life, we see Deuteronomy, "Hero Israel, the Lord is our God, the Lord alone. Therefore, you shall love the Lord your God with all your heart, with all your soul, with all your strength. And take to heart these words, which I enjoy daily, drill them into your children, speak at them at home, abroad, whether you're busy or at rest. In other words, constantly have this in mind, no matter what you're doing, or what your activity is." Okay, now, signs that God is at the center. And, good, this animation is actually working, this is good. Okay, so, there, of course, the three theological virtues. Spoiler alert, that's where I'm going. Okay, now, if we look at faith, then, what are signs that we are really living faith? And we'd say, obviously, the person who prays, and the person who willingly worships God, is really believing in God. And I'd say, what's a sure sign that somebody is actually a practical atheist, is they're not praying, and they're not willingly worshiping God. Okay, so, we would see, as Pope Paul VI put it in Evangelia di Antiochi, "You can't say that you're really evangelized until you're willingly participating in sacraments." And I don't know, but have you ever caught yourself saying, "Yes, it's November 1st, we have to go to Mass?" It's kind of like, "You have to go to Mass? You get to go to Mass and worship God? What?" Okay, so, how many times do we, often, we sometimes can catch ourselves going, "Oh, I have to go to Mass," or "I have to go to confession," or, if we are willingly going to the sacraments, eagerly receiving the sacraments, that's a sign that we really believe. Okay, and then, of course, our prayers should be a loving awareness of God's presence, that it's not like, "Oh, excuse me, I gotta go say my rosary, oh yeah, it's time for my holy hour, I'll make that really happen," whatever. It would be more like, "I get, I get to go to that." And I really admire people who take like the midnight, or 1:00, or 2:00 a.m. adoration out to the parishes, and I'm going, "These people really love God if they're doing that, it's just amazing." And a lot of them will say, "Well, you know, actually, I get more out of it, there's more graces there, I get more out of it than I put into it." And that's it. That's precisely, that would be signs that there's faith there, right? That you're willing to give up your sleep, you're willing to give up your time, and, you know, pour it out like wine, but like Mary Magdalene pouring it onto the head of Jesus, right? Breaking the alabaster jar and spending it all for Him. Those are signs that we really have God at the center, as opposed to, if, if all your prayers are, "Give me God, you know, give me, give me, give me," or, "I'm in so much trouble, please help me right now," if those are the only type of prayers, is when we're desperate, or when we want something, but it's never, "Thank you, God," or, "You're so good," then we need to have, we need to examine ourselves on, are we really practicing the virtue of faith? Okay, now, what are signs that you're really practicing hope? And I would, maybe it's just me, but it seems like, here's the, here's the big struggle. And we can go back to, you know, what did the devil succeed in doing at the very beginning? Is that his temptation of Adam and Eve was precisely to put in this wedge of mistrust, "Oh, did God really tell you not to eat from the tree?" And then, when they say, "Oh, we can eat from all of them, just not this one," then that's when the devil really just sticks it in there, it's like, "Oh, don't you realize that, that God is actually holding that over you?" It's, we all struggle with this trust in God. And so, don't be surprised that this is an area that, and may I suggest that this right here is where a lot of our idols get formed. We don't trust God, and so we grab for ourselves. Our self-gift becomes self-grab. So, we'd also have to say then, "What worries you? And what do you find your security in?" And I'd say, you'll hone in on exactly where your idol is. And what do we have to do then, is to foster that, that hope, this trust and confidence. And we think of like St. Faustina, and Jesus appearing to her and saying, "The more you trust, the more I will give you. If your trust is limitless, then my gift to you will be limitless." St. Teresa di Messia, that, that total confidence in God, that even audacity, or think of recently beatified Father Solon's case, who had actually so confident in God that he would thank God ahead of time. So, "Thank you for the bread that's gonna come..." Saying, "Thank you for the bread that's going to come to you." And it would come. So he worked all kinds of miracles that way. So that idea of really working on our hope and our trust in God. And of course, the greatest example of that would be Mary at the foot of the cross, where it would seem all the promises that were given to her were broken there, and yet she trusted faith, trusted, hoped against hope. And it was rewarded, right? Blessed is she who believed. The promises that would be given to her will be fulfilled. And we see, she's the only one who believes in Jesus on Holy Saturday. And her hope and confidence in God is rewarded in the resurrection of Jesus. So for ourselves, are we really living hope? The next one, of course, is charity. Now, this could take a couple of different aspects. Again, the two-fold commandment of, "Love God above all things in your neighbor as yourself." And so, as we look at this, we see awe and fear of the Lord. Now, St. John in his first letter says, "Perfect love casts out all fear." Why would I put down awe and fear of the Lord as a sign that you really love God? Well, fear of the Lord is not fear of punishment, it's the fear of offending. What's really at the, what's really the core of your life? Again, if you are going to refrain from doing things because you're afraid of what other people will say, then you'd say, public opinion is your God instead of the true God, right? On the other hand, if I fear what God would think, and I would refrain from doing it because I want to please God, that would be a sign that you actually have a healthy love of the true God, right? So now, I'm kind of like Catholic billboard here. It's no problem for me to make a sign of the cross and bless my food in a restaurant, because if I didn't, it'd be a scandal, right? It's kind of like, I better do it, or everybody will say, "What's wrong with her?" But do you have the courage to do it? And say, that would be something to say. What, if I'm refraining from doing something because I'm afraid of what somebody else will think, then I need to maybe switch that around and say, "What would God think if I didn't do it?" Or, "Would God be pleased if I did do it, even if it would be embarrassing?" Or something like that. So that's something to ask. Is, I would refrain from doing something because it offended God, or I would do something because I want to please Him. And then the other thing, of course, is, again, the acetate test that John gives us in his first letter is, "How do you say you love the God you can't see if you don't love your neighbor who you can see?" So that idea of, I think it's Chesterton who had the quote, the quip of, "God told us to love our enemies and to love our neighbor, and oftentimes, our neighbor is our enemy," right? In the sense that, of course, "I love all mankind, it's just the person that is right next to me that I can't stand," right? You have to, okay, in theory, I'm really loving, right? Okay, but we're all fallen human beings and we rub each other the wrong way. So we have to say, how do we know that we really love God? Is, if I can live in peace and harmony and really sincerely love the person I live with. Isn't that, I don't think it's just a common phenomenon. I think any one of us, if we're married in our families. I know, growing up with my sisters, we could just look at each other as we...
No, no, try not to fight.
Okay, but on the other hand, to really love the person that we're with in God. Okay, so those are signs that we really belong to God and that He really is the center of our lives. These are healthy ways. Now, I'm not going to leave it at that. I'm going to say, okay, so how can I increase these virtues? So we look at the seven ways to grow in our relationship with God. What are things that we can do to not just cast out the idols, but to build our relationship with God? Again, as Jesus Himself says, you know, "If we've cast out the devils and we've stepped out the house, but we haven't filled it, then He's going to bring back seven devils worse than Himself." So that idea of, how can we grow in our relationship with God? And some of the things I've already mentioned. And that would be, first of all, prayers and devotions. And again, I'm not doing the prayer to do the prayer. I'm doing the prayer to grow in the relationship with God. And if the prayer helps me, then I pray it. And if it's no longer helping me, then I'm going to move on and find something else. So the idea of the prayer and devotion is to grow in a relationship with God, not just to get how many rosaries I can fit in today, okay? Or how many memoraries, or how many, I don't know, aspirations. I think of a girl that I taught many years ago, that, she's a sophomore, and she was saying, "You know, I pray the St. Bridget prayer every day, you know, the fifteen prayers of St. Bridget on the Passion. Prayed that every day, and it was really helpful, and I just was on fire with it. But now it's such a drudgery, and I keep doing it, but it's so difficult now." And it's kind of like, well, God might be calling you to a different type of prayer. So maybe not recitation. Now you need to move into more of a mental prayer, or maybe move into meditation or something like that. But to not just be fixed on, "I'm always going to say this prayer." Now, that's different than saying, "I'm going to give up prayer altogether. I hope you understand the nuance that I'm trying to get." And then, devotions can be very helpful. And by the way, seasonal devotions are very good, like Stations of the Cross during Lent. Excellent for helping us. But that would maybe not be appropriate for Christmas. Just maybe. I don't know. Okay, but to look at the devotions that I have and match them to the liturgical year. And then, of course, meditation, God speaking to us through the Scriptures. And when I say meditation, that could be the whole broad range of any type of mental prayer. That could be lexio divina, it could be more of a discursive meditation. It might be more like Ignatian, put yourself in the picture. Like, "I'm in the stable, I can feel the struggle in my knees, I can smell the cheap manure," or whatever. And here's the, here's baby Jesus and the major and everything like that. So there's a whole, meditation is just a broad, huge area of mental prayer. And again, it doesn't necessarily, I mean, we as religions, we do it 30 minutes a day. But if your schedule doesn't permit for that, just 15 minutes or even five minutes in the morning, just reading the Scripture of the day. And I know things like Magnificat and other such things can facilitate that. And of course, the big one is the sacraments. Coming to Jesus, the source of grace in the Eucharist, and also in the sacrament of confession. Not just going to confession, we have mortal sins, but going into confession for like spiritual direction, for healing and things like that. And yes, I'm going to do a shameless plug. Is this is Vinnie Flynn's Seven Secrets of Confession is really good. In fact, some of the ideas for this talk are from him. But that idea of devotional confession, not just confession when I have mortal sin, but confession as healing my relationship with God and growing my relationship with God. So this is very important. And in fact, these are the two sacraments that Christ has left us that we can repeatedly receive and grow in a relationship with God. Of course, there's spiritual reading. There's a good example right there. By the way, the catechism, I hadn't read it for a while. I guess I didn't realize how long it's been since I read the catechism. But I was reading it for inspiration and ideas. And the section on prayer, I started rereading, and it's kind of like, this is beautiful. So just pick that up and read it again. But it doesn't have to be the spiritual classics like St. Teresa, or St. Teresa the Beatle, or John the Cross. But going back to the Bible, going back to the catechism, it can be very simple, spiritual reading. And if we think about that, it's like, what we put into our minds is what we think about, right? So basically, the stair steps of character and virtue is, as Aristotle says, "There's nothing in your mind that wasn't first of your senses." And so, filling your senses with good, positive images from spiritual reading, those are the things that you'll think about. And what you think about is what you start desiring. And what you desire is what you act upon. So it's, of course, especially if you're trying to get a prize out of your life, to find spiritual reading on the opposite virtue. And just read that can be tremendous growth in your relationship with God. So not spiritual reading to like, "Okay, I've read, I've read a book a week, yeah, check that off." No, it's the idea of spiritual reading as a springboard into deeper prayer. And then, this one's a nasty word in our society, mortification. That is, you know, giving up small things, the idea of doing something to them. It doesn't have to be wearing a hair shirt. And I know nowadays, everybody looks at me as like, "Oh, they're cutters or they're sick if they wear a hair shirt or something." But, you know, Our Lady of Fatima gave us the hint of saying, "Sacrifice can be offering up our daily duty, the difficulties of every day." Like, for me, it would be grading pupils. It's like, okay, look, this is for love of you, if you can burn your sinners. So it could be for a mom changing one order of a diaper. Whatever it would be. But to offer up our daily duty as a mortification. Or if we think in our society, we have so much comfort, convenience, plenty of food. So that idea of just simple mortifications of saying, "I'm not going to get heated between meals." Or, "I'm only going to check my email or my social media for 10 minutes on a day, on any given day," or something. Maybe that's a little unrealistic, but this idea of limiting, we are in a land of plenty. But to limit our intake, that can be a mortification too, right? Only taking what I need instead of, you know. What usually happens, you know, there's a buffet, and we have three different kinds of potatoes. And instead of just taking one type of potato, we take a little bit of all three, right? And so we agree. So this whole idea of mortification, "I don't need to try every flavor. I can just be satisfied with what's sufficient." And those are just some examples. Obviously, there's all kinds of, there's a world of things. Or it could be that, you know, in traffic, yes, that's a big example, right? Getting cut off in traffic instead of getting angry, just saying, "Okay, Lord, this one's for you." So, there's all sorts of different ways. And examining in our conscience. And I'm not just saying examining our conscience before we go to confession, but the examine in which, if any of you had the spiritual, or the spirituality of St. Ignatius, which I was in two years ago, one year ago, I can't remember. But that examine prayer of, you know, being aware of what God is doing in our life, being grateful what God is doing in our life. Not just looking at how did I miss out today, but what did God give me today? And just, just the practice of finding at least three things that God gave you today can really turn around your life, especially if you're very depressed, it seems as if everything's going badly. If you can think of three things you're grateful for each day, that can really turn it around. Bishop Herbert would put it, "Gratitude closes a complaining mouth." So he probably says it a little bit differently, but the basic idea of, if I'm thanking God for things and looking at, "How is God directing me in my life? As well as where the pit falls? Where are those idols in my life? What is keeping me from loving God?" And again, there's a really good, in the back of this book, there's a really good examine precisely that. Some seven steps to go through in helping you to examine your conscience. And then, of course, the last way is to practice the virtues and the gifts of mercy. Works of mercy. If we say that we, if we really love God and we're loving our neighbor, then obviously the practice of virtue is what's going to help us to grow in love. And, you know, St. Teresa Adela in the interior castle said something similar to that as well. Is that, "We can't know how much we love God, but if we strive to love our neighbor, then God in His goodness does increase our love of Him." So this whole idea of, these are the ways to grow in love. I said, "I love God, but I, you know, next to my, my next-door neighbor." No, it's precisely in loving the people that are most difficult to love that we show that we are growing in our love for God. Okay, so putting God more and more at the center of our life. And maybe these are very simple things, but they can have a profound effect in our lives if we do it. Now, there was one of, go ahead, please.
Sister, I would like to add another one.
Okay.
And it's called evangelization. And I say this, it can be done in a very simple way. And I don't mean necessarily going out and knocking on the door and talking down the aisle like that. But what I think is, speaking to strangers with a smile and hello. It's for a smile and a thank you. Or a smile and you can open that door for you. Sometimes, and I have found this to be true, and it's been wonderful. I found it to be a very big gift from God to me. Because I have been a very shy person most of my life. Not for the last twenty, twenty-five. And little by little, He let me, He helped me to open my mouth to strangers. For example, in a grocery store. How many times have we gone to the grocery store or to any other place that we need to go on a weekly basis or someplace? And all it takes is just a smile and a hello. And I have found that, I would say, more than 95% of the time, folks speak in return, and very often, very often, depending on circumstance, they will, for a few minutes, speak with me. And all I need to do to initiate more than just a hello is to say something very positive about them, like, "I really think that scarf you're wearing is beautiful." Or, "I really like how your hair is very flattering to you." Just something. And I have been very rewarded with responses that, like, no one ever said that to me before. And it can begin even at the checkout counter, the carts. And sometimes their days don't go that well.
That's right. Sometimes it can be, you're the only person who smiles with them. And I think you've just given a good description of what I mean by practice virtue and the gifts of mercy.
Maybe one of you will write about that.
But yes, evangelization. That would say, if you really have God in the center of your life, you want to give it to other people. And I'd say, you've got to, just right on.
Yes, I've had that experience with just strangers.
Well. Oh, no, it's just, she has similar stories. And it's just going, "Oh, it's great." So, well, that is one aspect of the talk. Now I would like to talk just a little bit about Catholics oftentimes get challenged with, "You are idol worshippers." So I thought, at the end of the talk, I would kind of answer... So I thought, at the end of the talk, I would kind of answer that. I know that there's one lady in the class that she's been dealing with that quite a bit. So this is especially for her idol. So, and that would be, you Catholics worship statues. Or worship Mary or whatever. So we look at this and we see what is often quoted to us is from the Ten Commandments in Exodus, is, "You shall not make for yourself a graven image or any likeness of anything, whether it's under the earth, on the earth, in the seas, in the air. You shall not bow down to them or serve them." And in the Protestant version of the Ten Commandments, this is actually the second commandment, right? "I am the Lord your God; shall not have strange gods before me." And then the next one is, "You shall not make any graven idols or bow down to them." Okay. And then they combine nine and ten into, "You shall not covet your neighbor's house, or his cows, or his wife," or whatever. So Catholics tend to use the Deuteronomical, Deuteronomy chapter five version. But they would, they will frequently point this one out. It's like, why do you disobey such a direct commandment? Because "graven" basically just means handmade, that is, you made it with your hands. Okay. So why do Catholics then have statues of things in your churches? If that is such a direct prohibition? So what we see here, however, is that God did command the making of images. And you can find them in Exodus, chapter twenty-five. We see detailed instructions about how to build the ark of the covenant, how to decorate the tenth tabernacle. And in Numbers, chapter twenty-one, you also have Moses, in fact, I think that's just the mass readings for this Sunday, is talking about worship, well, looking at the snake. "Make the bronze bowl, make the bronze serpent and mount it on a pole, and whoever looks on it will be healed." Now, what's interesting is, you go later on to the second book of Kings, you're going to see that the bronze serpent is actually preserved as a relic of the Exodus. Okay? And that it is actually venerated as something that God worked through. However, I believe it's during the reform of King Hezekiah that people have started to worship it as an idol, and he then destroyed it. So we see here is the distinction, is God is not forbidding making art, or graven images, if you would. And He's not even forbidding in the use of liturgy. It's like, I could, I just put up too, I mean, I could also put up First Kings where Solomon builds the cherubim, the Ten Cupid cherubim, that sheltered the art when he built the temple. But, it's First Kings, yes, about chapter eight, I think. But what we see here is that God is not even forbidding liturgical art. What He's forbidding is worshiping idols. Okay. So now, to put closure on that, we also see, this would be the constant teaching of the church from the beginning. And most Protestants do recognize the first seven councils of the church. And that would include, the Second Council of Nicaea is actually the seventh council. And that would be against the iconists, the iconoclasts, which would be the image masters. Okay? And so, what the Second Council of Nicaea would say is that, "By becoming incarnate, the Son of God introduced a new economy of images." In other words, before the incarnation, you couldn't depict God, because, you know, God's totally transcended from this world. But when God became man, we have the image of the Father in the human face of Christ. And that therefore, the veneration of images, Jesus, Mary, and the saints are perfectly legitimate. And again, if we talk about, maybe I should put it in a plug for the Icon Workshop this summer. That idea of, just as, the council actually says something, is, "Just as the words of the Gospel depict God in words, the icon depicts the image of, or depicts the truth of God through color." So that idea of, we don't worship the images, but rather venerate the person that it represents. Okay? And that would be the understanding. Now, if you think about, like, if you have a picture of your children on your phone, or your wife on your bill, in your billfold or something, or you have a picture of your family on your desk at work, are you worshiping them? No, they're reminders of those who you love. And you might even pick up the picture and kiss it, because your spouse isn't there to kiss, but you love them, and so you do it. Okay. So that whole idea of, if we venerate a statue in some fashion, whether it's, you know, kiss the foot of the cross or whatever, we're not thinking that that particular statue has any value to it, but rather, it is representing who we're actually venerating. And I think it was Saint Faustina who went to try to paint it. She was told to paint the Divine Mercy, the Divine Mercy image. And so she was trying to do it herself, and then, of course, she couldn't. So they finally commissioned an artist. And the first time she saw it was, she said, "Oh, Jesus, this is so ugly. You're so much more beautiful than this picture." And Jesus' response to him, to her was, "It doesn't matter what the image looks like. It's My grace that's going to flow through it, that it works." Or if you think of the image of Our Lady of the Rosary from Pompeii, it's hideous. Sorry. Maybe there's somebody out there that really likes the picture, but it's very kitschy. I don't know, formidable or what, I'm sorry. But the thing is, is the devotion of the people and their love for Mary, that's what's important. It doesn't matter if the statue's beautiful or not. It matters that it represents the person who we're venerating. Now, of course, we shouldn't try to make our statues look nice. But, you know, sometimes we do, and the idol holder, "Well, this is such a beautiful statue, everybody." Okay. Or, "I think it's a beautiful statue, it's a little too pink," but whatever. Okay. So, but the idea is, we're not, we're not venerating the statue as an idol and stuff, but rather, it's reminding us of the person who we are honoring. And so, well, that is what I have for tonight. So if you have any questions, I open that to you or comments, if you wish. But that whole idea of, unfortunately, as Saint, as Jeremiah puts it, "The human heart has so many twists to it." Really, only God can uncover all the idols in our life. But we shouldn't despair of that, but rather, to evermore entrust ourselves to God. Because one of the idols that we all have to struggle with is thinking that, "I can do this by my own strength." And it's, when does God really become God in our life? Is when we really let God be God in our life. And say, "I can't do this, I need your help. Even the desire to do good is your gift." And when I recognize that, that's when I can really make spiritual progress. So thank you for your attendance. And I will see you soon.